It is 6:30 PM and I call this meeting to order. Please stand and we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council. Votes will be conducted by a voice call rather than a roll call unless requested by a council member. This evening, I've got a proclamation regarding Winona Earth and Arbor Days. Whereas all people have a right to healthy, sustainable environment as well as economic growth and opportunity. And whereas trees provide many ecological and human benefits that are being diminished by changing temperatures and precipitation, more extreme weather events, and increasing pressure from pests, diseases, and invasive species. And whereas all of us as caretakers of our planet have an obligation to work toward lessening our environmental footprint. And whereas all of us can help build resilient communities and reduce the negative impacts of climate change by planting and caring for trees and by using wood products to store carbon into the future. And whereas the city of Winona participates in the Green Step Cities Program and Tree City USA program to better achieve our environmental goals and obligations. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Scott Sherman, hereby proclaim Friday, April 22nd, 2022, and Friday, April 29th, 2022, as Winona Earth and Arbor Days. In witness whereof, I have here on two set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Winona to be affixed this 18th day of April, 2022. I have one other thing I'd like to touch on real quick. If you've lived in Minnesota for a while, we have two seasons. We have winter and we have road construction season. I would like to remind the public and everyone who passes through Winona that we will have a lot of road construction going on this year. I ask everyone, please, and I hate to do this, but I'm going to use a phrase that Brett Favre of the Green Bay Packers used a few years ago. Relax. Take a deep breath. We are locals. We know the way around town. We know how to scooch through the back roads and get where we need to go. I also ask that you try to patronize the businesses that will be affected by the traffic construction this year. In general, take it easy, take a deep breath, be kind to others, and I think we'll get through this this construction season and we'll move into next winter without many issues. So again, thank you for that. City manager Chad Oubel.
Mayor and council, no comments tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Chad. I will now ask the city clerk to take roll call.
Mayor Scott Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Young.
Here.
Moller.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Rapinski.
Here.
Reminder that the public is not allowed to speak during these agenda items unless you have a request before council, and I have given you permission to speak.
Under the petitions, request and communications, item 3.1 is the 2022 Steamboat Days Agreement. And Jeremy Graves, this year's president, is here if you have any questions.
I'd make a motion to adopt the attached resolution.
Second.
Good motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any comments or discussion from council? George.
All I can say is thank you. And oil consumes a lot of time, personal time, working time. Thank you to all of you. And congratulations to Fred on his Harbor Master promotion.
Thank you, George. Anybody else? Pam.
Yes, hello. I have a question. I was paging through the proposal here and I noticed on the map the two gates in that big fence on the far side of the tracks are marked as unlocked gates, which is, you know, people do slip through there and like to do that. Very good. Do we have an agreement with Bay State or about the use of the cars or the track? Will the trains be moving through there during Steamboat Days?
Yes, we do talk to them and we let them know what our plans are and it's pretty similar the last few years. They do agree to hold back some trains after five, but otherwise it runs as as normal and we make sure to adjust and let people know what's going on. It hasn't been a problem in the past, but we do talk to them.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks, Pam. Michelle.
I have just been informed, because I didn't remember for sure, that this is the 75th year of Steamboat Days in Winona.
Yes, ma'am.
That's amazing. And I'm looking at this list of things. You guys are back strong. I went through the agenda in excitement because so many of the events people look forward to all season long are back and this is going to be an amazing year. So thank you to all of you for the work you put into that, because I'm really looking forward to it.
So are we.
Thanks, Michelle. Anyone else? No? Thank you, Jeremy. Appreciate it. Anything you'd like to say?
Just to build off of what Ms. Alexander had brought up, we have a big thing coming to Winona. She's been here in the past or a representative has been here in the past, but Ms. America will be here for the 75th. She will be coming and being in our grand parade and she will be attending the Miss Winona Scholarship Pageant along with a few other dignitaries from around other states. I think we're going to get Ms. Wisconsin and I believe Ms. Iowa will be here as well. So we have a few other large events coming. We have a marine band that'll be coming. Finally, we got them booked to come in, so that's the band that has marched in the last two presidential inaugurations. We have the South Shore Drill Team coming also, going to be putting on performances. We have the All-Star Dog Stunt Show, Dog Show, that'll be coming and be a part. If you've ever been up to the state fair, they've been there in the past and we'll have a bunch of stuff. We're partnering with a few organizations in town as well. You'll be able to get some canoe tours via Sandborne Canoe. We're very proud to announce that. We'll be announcing some times of that coming out, but that'll be happening river willing, you know, with how that works, but that's the plan. So we've got a lot of great things coming and we're very excited. We also have a wine and beer tasting that we're doing for the first time ever, starting on May 7th in a few weeks. We're partnering with Winona Hy-Vee Wine and Spirits and proceeds will benefit the Winona Volunteer Services. So we're real proud and excited to kind of kick off Steamboat Days. And we got a 75th Annual Steamboat Lager coming out. Mr. Mayor, we're hoping you'll attend that unveiling here in a week or so.
I certainly would. I'd be happy to. Thank you. And thanks to you and your team, obviously, just the thickness of that license agreement and the multiple agenda items tonight shows the amount of work that goes into this each year and I appreciate that very much. And I know people from all over the region come to Steamboat Days every day. So thanks again, Jeremy. Really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.2 is a request for licenses for the 2022 Steamboat Days. This is for the temporary on sale wine and beer license and the carnival license.
Move to approve the license.
Second.
We have a motion from George and a second from Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.3 is the Winona Steamboat Days Electrical Service Donation.
Make a motion to adopt the attached resolution and accept the donation.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Oh, Michelle Hunter, go ahead.
Thank you once again. Having helped put on community events, Steamboat Days has always been phenomenal to work with when we have to get electric, but this seems like a really nice way to make it cohesive for the whole community and for us to all understand who's responsible for the electric and how to get access to it. But what an amazing donation. I think you said that approximately $35,000 worth of a donation. So that's amazing. Thank you for that.
Any other discussion? Thanks, Michelle. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.4 is the Craft Beer Tour Agreement with Leighton Enterprises.
Make a motion to approve the license agreement and authorize administration to execute.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle and a second from Eileen. We have Pam Simon here. If anybody has any questions for her, any discussion?
Good event.
Absolutely.
Bigger and better this year.
Explain. Bigger and better. How?
We're back with 30 to 40 vendors. We haven't finalized all of them yet with up to, we'll probably have between 170 and 200 samplings. Using up all of Levy Park for our fun event and we have lots of games and interactive things to do and food that will be there. Tickets went on sale last Thursday. They're available at Midtown Foods or through our website. And you can always go to craftbeer tours dot com. You can not only see the Winona Craft Beer Tour, but our other station, Beer Tours, as well if you're a major craft beer follower person.
Very good. Thank you for that, Pam. Appreciate it. Any other discussion? Questions? Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.5 is a request for the temporary wine and beer license for the Craft Beer Tour.
Move to approve that license agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I will abstain, actually. Sorry about that.
No, not that one. That one too?
I'm abstaining from 3.6.
We were on 3.5.
I'm sorry. I jumped ahead. My apologies. Motion passes. 3.5.
Now, onto item 3.6 is a request for the Winona International Sprint and Kids Triathlon. Lindsey Sherman is here if you have questions.
Make a motion to approve the license agreement.
Second.
Motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? George.
Yes, just want to tell us about the event.
Sure. This will be technically our 13th year with the two years that we had off from COVID. And we have sprint distance, international distance, and then this year we're adding a duathlon, which is the same as the sprint try excluding, we, instead of a swim, they do an additional run. So it's a run bike run this year added on to the event. And then we're really excited that the YMCA is actually hosting the kids' try this year. So there will be running and biking on the path and then swimming in the Y pool. So those are the major changes for this year.
Okay. Thank you for your time and help on this.
Michelle?
I was just going to ask you about the kids. The first thing I did when I got my agenda is called my nephew to tell him the kids' triathlon was back on. But I said it was a new location. He goes, where are we swimming? Because I'm not sure about the lake. I said, I bet it's at the Y. But that's correct, right? They swim in the Y, come out, bike and run from that location.
Yep, and they'll be around the lake for the rest of it.
That's excellent. Thank you so much for coming back. It's always a family favorite for my family anyway. Not for me personally. I don't run, but you know, the kids.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other discussion?
Will you arrange to warm up the lake water a little bit? And it's free of weeds this year.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, Eileen. Now we'll be abstaining from this vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.7 is a request for a 5K and 10K by Bluff Umonosori.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.8 is an application for an on sale wine and beer license for the Garvin Heights Vineyard.
Move to approve the license.
Second.
We have a motion from George, a second from Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.9 is an application for an off sale 3-2 malt liquor license for Actec, doing business as Sinclair Service Drive.
Make a motion to approve the liquor license.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.10 is a proposal for a downtown parclet.
Make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Pam. Any discussion? Eileen.
I believe this is the third year that Jovi has set this up outside her shop and I have sat there many times. I think it's a great addition to Third Street and really one of those nice artistic things that improves our downtown cityscape. So I'm glad she can do it again.
Absolutely. Thank you, Eileen.
Hi.
Pam?
I just have a comment. It's just the more park benches and the more places we have for people to settle, the more they're likely to stay in the area instead of racing on through. So I think it looks great.
Absolutely. Thank you, Pam. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.11 is the Farmer's Market License Agreement.
Make a motion to direct staff to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Michelle?
Very important to me now that I can't have a garden of my own. The only question I have is I know that we have two longstanding events, Big Muddy and Steamboat Days, that are using it. You've made agreements. What happens if another entity wants to come in and set up over a weekend for a big festival? How do we make that work?
Is there one? It sounds like there's one.
Well, like last year, we had set up for Yenikopani Fest and there was some maneuvering issues because they have an agreement to be there at that time. So I'm wondering, and I'm hoping moving forward, there'll be more people who want to make use of Levy Park for festivals on weekends. So I'm wondering what kind of plan we have in place so they're not displaced, but people that need to set up Friday night and Saturday morning can do so.
Yep. Good question. Mayor and council, what we do is with the farmer's market, they're in a pretty strict area down at the Levy Park in that plaza. So if there are other events that we could deem that could operate concurrently, we would look at that and adjust and check for suitability and then make arrangements if at all possible.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you, Patrick. Any other comments or questions?
Well, I think that with all these festivals and races and farmer's markets, everything that's on the agenda tonight, I feel much reassured that we are going to have warm weather.
Well, Pam, I hope so.
Is that a guarantee?
Thank you, Pam. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.12 is the proposed license agreement for parking lot spaces with HBC.
Make a motion to execute the city clerk and mayor to fill out and sign this license agreement for parking.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from George. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.13 is St. Matthew's Church Street Closure Request for June 25th.
Make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.14 is the Walk to End Alzheimer's Street Closure Request for October 1st.
Move to approve their request.
Second.
We have a motion from George. I'm sorry, who's second? Michelle is the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.15 is the Minnesota Beethoven Free Concert Street Closure. The date of the concert is Saturday, July 9th. Make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Michelle?
What a nice gift to the community. Free Beethoven concert.
Pretty cool.
Wonderful.
Pretty cool. Yep, absolutely. Thank you, Michelle. Anything else? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1 is to award the contract for well number 14 maintenance to Keys Well Drilling Company with a quote of $83,560.
Move to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion from George, second from Michelle. Steve, you had a comment?
Could I ask engineering, just so I understand, this is routine maintenance? This is something we pull when it gets?
Yeah, they're on a 20-year schedule and this one's up on 20 years. This one's in Westgate.
Okay. So it's 20 years. You pull it, you replace your wear parts and?
We evaluate what needs to be taken care of and then replace and repair what's needed.
Preventative maintenance.
Preventative maintenance.
We've worked with these entities before.
Yep, Keys is one of the big ones. We solicited both from the four big ones and they were the best one.
Thank you. Just checking. Appreciate it.
Very good. Michelle?
How did you get them to come in under bid?
Well.
Nice job. Considering the climate we're in.
We estimated high because of the climate we're in. They're more expensive than last year's.
Well, but the next closest one was 110,000. We had a budget of 85 and they came in under the 85, so you must have done something right. So thank you.
No credit is taken on this.
Well, maybe the engineer will take it. Do you want?
Good job, Ryan. Good job.
Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, Brian. George?
A good job, Ryan. You said Westgate. Did you mean, thank you. Thank you.
I wasn't.
Lane 12.
Maybe there's a well over there.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 4.2 is to reject all bids for the South Baker Street Reconstruction Project.
Make a motion to adopt the attached resolution rejecting all the bids.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Aaron. Any discussion? George?
Yeah, what all happened here?
Brian estimated this one wrong. Okay. Basically, we got Elkhorn expecting was the low bid. In conversation with them, they would not get materials until end of August at the earliest and probably September, if not later. So we're looking at that point. They won't get Gilmore done before school. They won't probably even finish the project this year. So we just felt it was best to reject, we'll rebid in December, January. If materials are still an issue, then they should be able to get materials to start April, May and be finished hopefully next year before school would end or start back up, excuse me.
Okay. Thanks, Ryan. Michelle?
So basically, the project is pushed for one year. We'll do the bidding a little earlier. The budget will carry forward and we're going to get it done. It's just going to be later than we hoped.
Yep, exactly.
Well, and you're being optimistic about April weather next year also.
Well, that's.
I'm basing it on this year. I think we're May or June, but whatever.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel he knows his stuff with that bidding.
Just for clarification for the public, can you kind of explain, you know, like, obviously, we can't lock this price in for next year. How does that work? Or, you know, do we expect increases for next year? How will we look?
I guess it's hard to say based on what's happening with prices right now. Typically, you would maybe see a little bit more competitive bidding in like a December, January. We only had two bidders on this one.
Sure.
If we bid earlier in the year, we'd probably see three, four, or five. So I couldn't say for sure for prices, but I would expect more bidders at least.
Okay. Awesome. Thanks, Ryan. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Under new business, item 5.1 is the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development. One-time exception to the state and local revolving loan funds.
Make a motion to authorize staff to proceed with submitting the application for one-time exception.
I will second that.
Feel like a lot of review for us right now, George.
Well, I think I'm at a Port Authority meeting now.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from George. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Lucy, could you just explain this a little bit for us here? So we all have an understanding as to what we're doing here. One-time exception.
Yes, mayor and council. So the Port Authority did approve this. The Port Authority has a revolving loan fund and it consists of federal, state, and local funds. And what this item does is it provides an opportunity to take a portion of that state fund balance. And if 20% of what amount we select is returned to the state, 80% can go into the local revolving loan fund. And that's the loan fund we were able to make the 26 COVID loans out of to help a number of businesses. I will say, just promoting the program, the Port Authority's made well over 75 loans to local companies. We never fund a project entirely. It's always in conjunction with a bank and it's been a great program for many local businesses.
Thank you, Lucy. In general, you'd say it's a gap loan fund in that respect?
Yes.
Yep. Very good. Thanks. Any other questions or comments? George?
I have the opportunity to serve on that committee and, you know, it's been very, very successful. And Lucy and Nick, I know Nick was here, but I mean, there's, and it's a lot of in-depth interviewing that you folks do before it comes to us and it's a good program. It's been very successful.
Mr. Mayor?
Steve?
You know, actually, I just sat down with Lucy and Nick and they explained this to me. I didn't know much about this. This is a fantastic deal for Winona that we've got, you know, a department that helps cycle this loan money through our community. And in fact, they've given loans to one of my customers that helped them build their, successfully build their business. What a great deal for us. So at some point, I'd love a slightly expanded discussion on what we're doing so the public, so I can learn more about it and so the public can learn more about how their city works and how we're growing through these revolving loans.
That poses a good point and thank you for that, Steve. Is there any marketing or what marketing do you use behind these programs?
So mayor and council, this program is on our webpage, on our port webpage. It does get a little confusing because there's a number of different funds. We do meet with the banks to discuss the program with them because most of the clients requesting money do come from a bank loan where the bank comes in with, say, 50 or 60% of the loan and then the port is coming in with the remainder. So we have it on our webpage. We do meet with commercial lenders and with the SBA who also refers people to us.
Great. Thank you, Lucy. Michelle?
I mean, honestly, it's the perfect department for it to be in as well because you've got Nick there, you've got you and inspections department. So a lot of the people that you serve on a daily basis from an inspections standpoint can make use of these funds because a lot of business owners, building owners are coming in for normal things and then you have people there with information. I know I've directed a few people to that direction looking for development deals with the Port Authority and I think you guys make it very easy to get the information. I don't know how to get it out beyond the normal target market you have over there from people that just come in looking for the normal information, but I think you must do it pretty successfully because all those loans you gave out last, two years ago, was it? For COVID relief? I mean, somehow you were able to get the information of the people that needed it and I think well-spent money.
Yeah. Thank you, Michelle. Thanks again, Lucy. Appreciate it. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 5.2 is the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development. Cleanup Grants for 60 Main.
I'd make a motion to apply for the funding for the site at 60 Main and a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle. I'll take George, who's just a hair ahead of you there for the second. Any discussion, comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 5.3 is the appointment of election judges to serve at the 2022 special primary election.
Make a motion to approve the election judges for the 2022 special primary election.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion, questions? Michelle?
Wow, Monica, good job on finding all these people who are willing to come in, serve the community in a non-typical primary election. And thank you to all of them for volunteering because I know without them, we can't make our system work. So great job.
Monica is a busy person, for sure.
And mayor and council, I would note there are still a few openings left. I'm waiting to hear back from a few folks, but if there are anyone, anyone out there that's willing and able to work on May 24th, give me a call and we'll get you in for training. And I would note all the alternates will be assigned. I just have to do the assignments and party balancing, so. Yes.
Monica, is there an option for any early voting or mail-in voting for this election?
Yes. Actually, the. Actually, the absentee voting process has already begun. And you can apply for that through the Winona County Auditor's Office. You can do that in person or you can email them a request for an application. The last, I think it's the last seven days before the election is called early voting because you'll put your ballot directly in a counting machine. If you do it prior to that, you'll put it in an envelope that they will open during those last seven days. But yes, early voting is or absentee voting has already begun.
Thank you.
And there are 20 candidates for this election.
Holy smokes.
Better do some research.
Good point, Eileen. Thank you. Michelle?
Just a reminder, the community who maybe is not aware this is happening, you need to vote in the primary, in the election, you got to get out and vote. I think a lot of people maybe aren't even aware that this is a thing that is happening this year. So vote.
Thanks, Michelle. Any other comments? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And item 5.4 is the finance temporary or part-time IT support position.
Make a motion to approve the addition of a part-time IT support position.
Second.
Motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Eileen, you have a question?
I have a couple of questions. Is this a is this something that was in our budget?
This was not in our budget. It's an unbudgeted position, but I would reduce the scope of our, one of our security items because I feel that this is more important. We're just because of the cybersecurity risks that are out there right now. It would be very helpful to have our our current information systems coordinator available to implement some needed cybersecurity upgrades.
Absolutely. And then my second question is, is this something that we will roll into the budget in the future as an ongoing position?
Yeah, I would like to keep this position in the budget for future years.
Great. I think as our technology advances, it'll be very necessary. So thank you.
Thanks, Eileen. Jen?
Mayor and council, Jessica did an excellent job explaining. Just wanted to add one more piece of that. I think what's important as we budget in the future, yes, we would bring this forward as a budgeting item. But also to know that part of this decision process was a little bit what we discussed tonight and it's looking forward future years is that we know that during the comp plan update, you know, one of the key components is accessible government. And a lot of a lot of the early items that were discussed for accessible government relate to technology. And so we also know that, or at least we're anticipating that, you know, the community is asking us to do more with technology. And so this position would would help us with that as well.
Michelle?
Well, as always, Jessica, wonderful job in finding a creative way to make sure we're secure. If I understand correctly, that means Brad's just delightful presence will not be here at council meetings. He will be doing the very important task of making sure our systems are secured and he can train and load programming that no one else can understand into the system. And we'll have a different person here at night running this programming.
That's correct.
Can we clone Brad? So, okay.
But he can train a new person, right?
I I have one question real quick. Do we foresee this becoming a full-time position at some point? Have we had, are we not that far down the road yet?
We're not there yet.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
The $13,000, is that prioritated from now till till end of the fiscal year?
That's right.
Thank you.
And so we would anticipate it to be higher next year. Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other questions? George?
Again, good job on finding the money. As Michelle said, being creative. And I've never seen Mr. Budnik smile so much over that night.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Jessica. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
Councilmember Wozzakowski?
Thank you. Since we've been on port authority issues tonight, I would just like to just simply tell everyone here that at our last port meeting, we did a election of officers. We revoked the current officers back into office. And that being president is Mike Chikonowski. Vice president is Dana Johnson. Treasurer is Mike Hanson. Executive Secretary Chad Hubel. Director of Community Development Lucy McMartin. Development Coordinator Nick Larson. Director of Finance Jessica Wojon. And city engineer Ryan Miners. And we have a very, very good staff of people there taking charge of the port authority and a and a good board on there. And Laurie Lucas and myself served on the nominating committee. And I want to just send out kudos to Laurie Lucas. She did a very, very good job. So emailing back and forth and talking with this one, that one, and very, very good job. So thank you to Laurie Lucas for her time on that. And just on a sad note, I would just like to send out condolences to the family of Peter Flick. Peter Flick, who was the educator here in the Winona School System for many years. And also, he was a very, very good member, participating member of the Finance Arts Commission. And Peter's input and his work will certainly be missed. Condolences to his family and children as they carry on. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, George. George, the mustache, is that for the Easter Bunny?
It was for the Easter Bunny. And it should come off tomorrow if I can get a haircut. And I do get haircuts.
Thanks, George. Councilmember Alexander?
I just want to thank Chad Hubel and Jessica Wojon. I had a a moment last week with Jessica. She saw my head in the window and so she stopped in to say hello at my office. And what was a friendly hello turned into an interrogation for Jessica. I was asking her questions about our financial statement and our budget coming up. And, you know, the two of them, very creative people, have come up with a way to, well, and I guess our staff is also deserves a big thank you. We didn't have worker comp claims, so there was leftover funds that they were able to use to put back into our our park fund and our facility fund and our equipment fund. And there was some leftover funds that we could put back into those at the end of the budget, which now means our equipment fund, which was at zero, is now at, what, 275 approximately? They were also able to somehow find funds to include another million in our reserve fund, which takes us from the 5 million, which is significantly lower than where we need to be, back up to six, which is a great, amazing thing that means we're back on that swing back up to getting back up to that 10 million we should have there. I just don't know how the two of you did that, but I just can't thank you enough for sitting down and finding creative ways to fit employees, shift funds around, make it so that we're able to start off on a better foot with the budgeting cycle. I I wasn't anticipating that when we met, but I was very excited to hear that you were able to work together to come up with a solution that puts Winona in a better financial position than I had feared maybe we would be. So wonderful job. That's all I have.
And if anyone has run into Jessica lately, it's audit season, so they've been busy down there.
Maybe that makes what I did even meaner. I'm sorry.
Thanks again, Jessica, for everything you do. Thank you, Michelle. Councilmember item? Very good. Thanks, Pam. Councilmember Mulan?
Yes, I talked with the city manager about this a little bit, but I would love at some point to get an update on what we are doing with the quote unquote green space by Madison that is ours. There it's springtime and I see kids playing over there. I think that for very little cost, we could make it look a little bit nicer. So I just love to, I know we don't have a budget for it, but that would be a nice update. And I'm also wondering if anyone has approached the property owner of the former middle school auditorium space where there's now empty space about the possibility of creating space for a drive-through book drop in the future. I think that would be a wonderful contribution to the city if we could get a little bit of space. And I know that that's something that would help library traffic a lot. I think it sounds like something that is silly, but it is a huge, huge benefit. Where I grew up, we had several drive-through book drops and it made it so much easier to return materials on time. And it keeps traffic off of those parking spots that are hotspots. So would love to know if that's a possibility.
Thanks, Eileen. I'll throw my hat in the ring. If there's a volunteer group that wants to help with the Madison green space, I would be more than happy to help out with that because myself and my children frequent that area. So thank you for that, Eileen. Councilmember Young? Okay, thanks, Steve. Councilmember Rapinski?
Nothing, mayor, thank you.
Okay, very good.
Under the consent agenda, there are four items. Approval of the minutes from April 4th. The final adoption of an ordinance to establish no parking loading zone on Center Street and two claims against the city for sewer backups.
I move approval of the consent agenda.